Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, October 21st at 6:00 PM. And I'm calling this Lacey City Council meeting to order. For the record, Councilmember Greenstein is going to be attending remotely and all other council is present. And with that, if you're able, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I also want to acknowledge that we, the city of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek, including the Nsquawak Indian tribe and Squawakson Indian tribe. That can I get a motion to approve this evening's agenda and consent agenda items?
I move that we approve the agenda as published.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, then all in pair with the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed?
Aye.
That motion unanimously carries. We have an approved agenda. First up on our approved agenda, under public recognitions, is our Lacey Youth Council reports. Could see the Lacey Youth Council here. Come on up.
Good evening, council. I'm Joe Wipple, again, reporting for North Hurston High School. Not all that much has happened at our school so far. We just had homecoming two weeks ago. There's been a spike in conflict in our school, though, so that's been getting situated, and that's about it.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Luca Frelick, and I am once again the youth representative for the homeschool community. Homeschoolers have been busy getting into the fall. My fall break was two weeks ago, but it wasn't really a break for me because I was taking the SAT and busy with other homework and stuff. Fall sports are also getting close to the end, and my last event is in two weeks. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Isabella, and I'm representing River Ridge High School. So we just had our homecoming football game. Our Hawks tried their best. We had a tailgate party before. The theme was neon, and a lot of people came. It was really fun. We had our homecoming the next day, the theme being colors of carnival, and there was a lot of good music, good food, and it was really fun. We also had our blood drive recently for National Honor Society, and our goal was to donate, I'm pretty sure, about 100 pints of blood. And I'm not sure if we reached that goal, but I'm pretty sure we did. And then we also had our trunk retreat, where we had lots of the community members come in and play games, get candy, and just we advertised our clubs that way. It was really fun. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey there, council. My name's Matthew, and I'm a representative for Timberline. For our school, starting off with sports, we beat our rival schools, Thurston and River Ridge. We beat them by 45 to zero.
Ouch.
And they're going off to the playoffs. For our clubs, our clubs recently started, starting off with FBLA, which is Future Business Leaders of America. We're having our fall conference real soon. And then starting off with also Key Club, which is a volunteering organization club. We set up a time and an event to volunteer for the animal joint service here at Lacey. And yeah, and also, last thing, we also had our homecoming. Our homecoming theme was Disney-related, so that was super cool. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Avini, and for the past few meetings, the Lacey Youth Council, we focused on learning our different communication styles and the strengths and weaknesses that come along with these communication styles. And we also learned about how the city of Lacey handles our social media.
Thank you, as always, Lacey Youth Council. We appreciate your update. So next up on our agenda is proclamations, and our first proclamation is Walk to School Month.
City of Lacey official proclamation. Whereas making bicycle, pedestrian, and active transportation safety improvements a priority can help protect the life and safety of Lacey youths and?
Whereas the city of Lacey is working to add bike lanes, trails, sidewalks, and improve street crossings to connect our neighborhoods better and provide safe routes to school. And?
Whereas regularly walking, biking, and rolling to school is fun, improves the health of our youth, and increases students' readiness to learn. And?
Whereas driving students to school contributes to traffic congestion and air pollution. And?
Whereas an important role for parents and caregivers is to teach children how to be safe pedestrians and bicyclists on our streets. And?
Whereas in October, community leaders, parents, and children from around the world will join together for Walk to School events to increase awareness about the health and environmental benefits of walking and biking to school. And?
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the city of Lacey, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, do hereby recognize the month of October 2025 as Walk to School Month in Lacey, and encourage all community members to promote the safety and health of children this month and throughout the year by supporting pedestrian, bicycle, and active transportation improvements, driving responsibility in school zones, modeling safe pedestrian and bicycle behaviors, and practicing an active lifestyle. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, on this date. And Carrie, can people come up and accept this? Do the picture in front real quick.
So I'm Carrie, and I'm with Inner City Transit's Walk and Roll Program. Walk and Roll increases independence, improves safety, and inspires a healthy lifestyle by making walking, biking, rolling, and riding public transit more accessible to people in our community. We bring a variety of programs to the residents of Lacey, including our Mobile Traffic Garden that visits schools and summer camps. If you're unfamiliar, a traffic garden is a miniature streetscape where youth can safely practice bicycle and pedestrian safety skills away from cars. We also partner with Lacey Parks and Rec and North Hurston Public Schools to bring our teens' biking to destinations program to the community. Through hands-on activities and group rides on neighborhood streets, teens learn basic bicycle safety, handling skills, and maintenance. And to better equip the participants, those who complete the program receive a brand-new bike, helmet, lock, and set of lights. We also take students on rolling classroom field trips where they can learn about the importance of public transportation. Walk to School Month serves as a reminder for us all about the importance of safe, healthy, and environmentally friendly ways to get our children to school. To Lacey families who can, we encourage you to try walking to school this month. Walking to school helps improve safety by reducing traffic congestion and air pollution around schools, and it also helps students show up ready to learn and helps build some physical activity into their day. To Lacey drivers, we use the opportunity to remind you to slow down, remain vigilant in school zones and residential areas, and to stop for pedestrians at crosswalks and to always be cautious around children since they're still learning how to be safe pedestrians and bicyclists. And we'd like to thank the city of Lacey for continuing to work on making Lacey a more bicycle and pedestrian-friendly city, and thanks for recognizing October 2025 as Walk to School Month.
I'm Angela Brooks from North Hurston Public Schools. I don't need to echo anything that Carrie shared, so I just want to thank both Inner City Transit and the city for being willing to prioritize Walk to School Month and also prioritize other ways to get to school, like biking, by providing bikes for our students, providing traffic gardens. They are all about that, so thank you for the support. Thank you.
Our next IMR under proclamations is for Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
City of Lacey official proclamation. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, gender identities, and income levels, and is a pervasive problem in the state of Washington and across the nation. And?
Whereas statistics indicate that 1 in 4 women and 1 in 10 men in Washington State will experience domestic violence in their lifetime, and that domestic violence impacts not only victims but also their children, families, and the broader community. And?
Whereas in Washington State alone, there were over 48,000 domestic violence offenses reported to law enforcement in 2024, with many more going unreported due to fear, stigma, or lack of resources. And?
Whereas domestic violence-related fatalities remain a critical concern. The Washington State Coalition Against Domestic Violence documenting that 45 individuals lost their lives to domestic violence homicide in 2024. And?
Whereas the city of Lacey is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all residents and recognizes that addressing domestic violence requires a collaborative effort from law enforcement, social services, community organizations, and community members. And?
Whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an opportunity to educate our community about the importance of intervention and prevention to support victims and survivors and to hold abusers accountable for their actions. And?
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the city of Lacey, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, do hereby recognize the month of October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Lacey, and encourage all community members to participate in efforts to prevent and raise awareness of domestic violence, support survivors, and work towards ending violence in our homes and in our community. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, on this date. And we have people from the Family Support Centers. I'll sound.
My name is John Quill. I support the victims of domestic violence here in Lacey. I'm able to do this important work because of the partnership between the city of Lacey and the Family Support Center of South Sound, which houses the Family Justice Center. When I say here in Lacey, I mean it. I'm the only person at the Family Support Center who is able to focus all of my time and energy on supporting survivors just here in this town, and I take my responsibility seriously. Before I talk about that, though, I'm going to provide a brief history lesson. The Family Justice Center was established over a decade ago through the partnership between the Family Support Center, the Thurston County Sheriff's Office, the Prosecutor's Office, and the County Clerk's Office. The goal was simple but powerful: bring as many resources a survivor might need to a single location. Instead of sending people all over town to get help, the Family Justice Center leadership team created a space where survivors of domestic violence, sexual assault, stalking, and human trafficking could walk in and find legal support, counseling, advocacy, housing support, basic needs, supplies like food and diapers, and so much more. Today, the Family Justice Center has grown to include multiple partner organizations on site at the Family Support Center campus, as well as develop quick referral processes to other programs and resources that support them. Over the past three years, I've supported hundreds of survivors, many of them reaching out for the very first time. Sometimes I work with a survivor once, others for years. No matter how much time I spend with someone, I do my best to make sure they are prepared for what comes next, whether it's paperwork, having to see their perpetrator in court, planning the best way to keep their children safe, or taking the next steps towards healing. DB can impact a family not just now, but for generations to come. Last year, across all their programs, the Family Support Center served over 100, excuse me, 1,000 families. More than half of them listed domestic violence in their recent history. And just this week, there are over 400 households in Thurston County fleeing or attempting to flee abuse and waiting for safe housing. When the Family Support Center staff completely, excuse me, completes lethality assessments, the majority of survivors report that violence has increased. 51% say their abuser has access to a firearm, and over half have been strangled, one of the most serious predictors of homicide. I see this reflected here in my work in Lacey. Perpetrators are becoming more violent, more egregious, and inflicting greater degrees of harm on their victims. These realities remind us why early intervention and collaboration are so important. It's my hope that when a survivor that needs help, that our whole community will be there for them. Until then, the Family Justice Center will be there. Our community partners, like the Prosecutor's Office and Safe Place, will be there. By reading this proclamation today, the city of Lacey is showing that they will too be there to support survivors. The Family Support Center's mission: working together to strengthen all families and survivors, and that work together is key. Thank you for standing together with us during Domestic Violence Awareness Month, for believing survivors, and for helping make Lacey and Thurston County a community where safety and hope are possible. Thank you.
It just came to my attention that the clerk actually had a question about the approval of the agenda that today. I asked at the very beginning for a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda, and then you recommended that motion, so just want to clarify for the clerk. Okay. Next up is a public comment. We had some written public comment, but is anyone wishing to address the council tonight? Seeing none. Then let's go to our main topic for today is our 2026 budget and our budget presentation from our city manager.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Council. And it's with pleasure tonight to be before you to present the proposed budget for the calendar year 2026. Before I really get into the budget presentation, I first want to, you know, I'll use it as something to do at the end, but I want to make sure I recognize all those that helped put together this budget and this presentation tonight. So I really want to specifically recognize Donna Feliciano, Peyton Griffin, Gabby Wolf, Chelsea Yarwood, Troy Wu, Vanessa's team in Community Economic Development pulling against data, and Scott's team and pulling, that's nice Scott sitting in for Scott Agar tonight, but I can hit, say Scott, and I can hit probably about five Scots to recognize, so. But the Public Works team pulling together data, as well as Chief Armada and Jen and Shannon. So this really is a team effort, and tonight is the opportunity to formally present the budget to the city council for the official deliberation by council on that budget over the next several weeks, month, with the public hearings and workshops and budget revenue hearings, those type of things, to ultimately set up for final action on the budget by the city council December 16th at your regularly scheduled public meeting. The other thing about this budget is it wasn't an easy budget. This budget this year, as council recall, and I'll talk a bit more about this as I get into the presentation, but we've been working since the preparation for the 2025 this year's budget back in 2024, identifying some funding shortfalls and started working on strategies and efforts to try to shore up some of those shortfalls, but also going into this budget session knowing that we did not have a lot of wiggle room in terms of adding new resources, new enhancements. So all the department, the director team, our leadership team, and the staff have really worked hard to try to figure out what was really critical versus what is important and needed, but quite do it. So how are we going to do maybe things a little bit differently or spread out some of that service levels? So with that, again, it's here tonight to present to the council the, if I can get my notes to work, the 2026 proposed budget. It's a budget of just over $224,608,566. It is balanced, but however, it is balanced with using about three, just over $3 million in reserves. Fortunate thing with the past financial practices of the city, the city council, and the leadership team, we do have reserves available for this, so we did anticipate this opportunity, but we tried to minimize the amount of reserves that we would need to balance this year's budget. This particular budget is focused on funding existing operations and maintenance, strategic initiatives, and commitments. What that means is we really looked at trying to preserve what our current operation levels are, as well as maintenance, strategic initiatives, funding with, funding those efforts that may have return on investment in terms of, like, for instance, economic development strategies or other measures. And then the commitments. Those can be current contract commitments, interlocal agreements, but also those commitments of past decisions to bring in new facilities and to continue the ongoing maintenance and operation of those and adding those into the budget this year. And then, of course, the budget was developed with a focus on identifying reserves to fund a lot of these programs, and also dedicated funding to make sure any new programs or resources, or even some existing ones, can be, have identified funding source that was dedicated for that purpose. And then, of course, trying to maintain the current investment in council priorities, you know, continue these programs that we had reserves already designated for and to meet some of those commitments in the council work plan. So this budget, also, you know, I talked about meeting all these objectives, it also is a budget designed to support about 342 and 1/2 FTEs, our employees, our most important resource, to provide service to a community that includes a population of about 60,380. And one of the things, again, I'll talk about this a little bit later, but just as a footnote, you know, that's, 60,380 is a large population. We grew by 170 people from the 2024 estimate, but also, I went back and looked at the 2020 census, and at that time, the 2025 census identified, or had a population for the city of Lacey of 53,528 people. So just think about that, since 2020 to 2025, we've grown by almost 7,000 people. However, we're starting to see that population growth plateau a bit. We also provide services to over 26,000 housing units in a geographical area about 19.8 square miles. We also service and maintain about 1,200 acres of parks and 185 street center line miles. And we also have, we're made up of a series of businesses, about 1,500 businesses that provide goods and services to the community, but also we need to support, and those businesses also employ about 23,000 people in the city of Lacey. And a total square footage of commercial industrial space is 15.7 million square feet. So a quite large city, but we also have a budget to try to meet those needs for the coming year. So next, I want to talk a little bit about some of the influences that are out there that help shape and frame this budget. And some of them are more influences that we don't have direct control over or are not directly located, but do affect how we develop the budget and with our revenues and expenditures. Those influences, again, I mentioned before, as we've been a fast-growing community and we've been building up some of our revenues, especially sales tax, we're starting to flatten out, so we're starting to see that revenue starting to flat out. So that's where we're trying to see some challenges. The same thing with development activity. As development activity flattens out, then that slows down our, the growth of our assessed valuation for the community, which also relates to property tax revenue. Again, as I mentioned before, this is our second consecutive year of a substantial budget deficit that has been balanced by reserves, so again, we've been planning for this effort, and we have some strategy in place to help going forward. This year, again, is at just over 3 million, as a reminder to the council. Last year, we used $1.8 million in reserves to balance the budget, so we're seeing that gap grow. There's, of course, a lot of economic uncertainty across the country, across the state and locally. There's an inflationary environment for basic goods and services that are creating more pinches for people to afford household expenses. You also have the rising cost of providing public services that continue inflation, you know, affects the city, the city and as well as all cities and local governments in trying to provide those services in a cost-effective manner. And then, of course, as we've kind of heard recently, there's a general tax awareness affecting the community, and of course, that was seen with the recent failure of the Metropolitan Parks statistic ballot measure for the city of Lacey, which was really key because that was one of our revenue strategy we identified as potentially to create some dedicated funding for our parks, recreation, and cultural programs, including expansion of our parks capital improvement program. That dedicated funding would have helped us achieve those goals and also continue expanding maintenance. We're going to have to dial those things back now because we do not have that dedicated revenue to be able to support that in the same fashion that we envisioned. And then finally, we always are faced with those state and federal mandates without funding support. There are always requirements coming down from state, states dealing with their own budget issues, and so a lot of times they will defer some of those costs or improvements to the local level, so we're always struggling with that to incorporate that into our operations as well. Some of the data or the year-to-year indicators that we use kind of track our budget process is also tracking our month-over-month sales tax percentage growth. And again, it's pointing out that month-over-month is the difference between a month in the current year to the previous month in the previous year. And so it is an indicator to kind of track how the expenditure goes. This particular slide shows that month-over-month percentage growth of retail sales tax for 2024. And as you can see, in April of 2024, we started to be in a decline in that month-over-month return. That continued for nine months throughout the year of 2024. I have the main number, that negative 10.38% circle, just to kind of keep as a placeover because as we go to the 2025 sales tax month-over-month, we continued that declining sales tax in January, February for a total of 12 continual months of declining sales tax revenue, but we did start seeing a bump in April and May. And I circled May again to show that one of the things you got to be careful about looking at month-over-month sales tax growth or differences is that 7.5% seems like it's on a rise, but if you compare that to the previous May in 2024, which was negative 10, you're really about 3.5% still less than the 2023. So you got to look at that in a context of the point in time, and then what is the context of the historical factors? So again, I was talking to Troy today. I think that this month, we did now break even for our budget projections, but again, we have very modest retail sales tax growth, which is going to go into our forecasting for the upcoming year. Another indicator we like to track and look at the local economic and development activity is housing starts. And of course, this slide shows housing activity going back to 2016. The orange portion of the column is single-family detached homes, and the purple is multifamily units. And you can see that transition, we talked about several times over the past several years on my presentations, about that transition from the single-family dominated building market to multifamily. That is still demonstrated in this range, and you can see that single-family detached activity continuing to decline in number of permits issued per year. But our multifamily still is staying strong, and in the pipeline, we do have another 387 single-family lots that would be coming online in the near future, as well as about just under 700 multifamily units. Another indicator is just the total number of permits issued and total valuation because we do track that valuation. And this slide indicates with the blue columns is the total number of permits issued each year, and that is all permits by the Community Economic Development Department. The orange line talks about total valuation. So you see, as we've moved into the '23, '24, and '25, you start seeing a decline in total number of permits and also a decline in the total value of those permits. The years of 2019, 2020, and 2021 was when we had a lot of large multifamily, as well as a lot of industrial activity, industrial buildings, but the industrial areas fairly built out, so we're going to see that starting to moderate going forward. And then what we can expect going into 2026 is in our private development activities, some specific projects, some of these councils aware of and we've talked about, or the Community Economic Development Department has briefed the council on. But some of that development activity that's coming up is, we have three hotel projects, the Hogan Bay and Britain Plaza Hotels, which is about 362 rooms. I know this has been a topic too, related to lodging tax dollars, because that will also increase the revenue for lodging tax. Just want to place a note that those projects have received land use approval, but they haven't started the construction drawing phase. And if they started, they were working, were able to pick up permits today, they'd still have to construct a site, so if they picked up permits today, it'd still be about 18 months out before they realize. So those are something that are going to be 18 to 36 months or more before they're online and providing services to the community. eighteen to thirty-six months or more before they're online and providing services to the community. We also have a couple of exciting commercial projects coming up, The Yard, which is a kind of more of an entertainment hospitality type of a facility, a taproom, pickleball courts and open space located College Street and Seventh, right at the corner. And it's called The Yard because it's intended to be designed as a backyard, so to speak, for the new residential that's being built into the midtown area. So they're providing some amenities and activities for those future res, existing and future residents. And then of course, everybody has realized that the, one of the Rite Aid stores on Slater Kinney that went dark with the transition of Rite Aid going out of business is now being repurposed and will be the new location of the Trader Joe's grocery store on Slater Kinney. And we're excited about that as a community, not only for those types of goods and services, but also it brings flow and activity into the area that will hopefully create opportunity for more reinvestment to build off of that, that traffic pattern. And then of course, we've got our mixed use projects. Homes on Martin is the project out on East Martin Way. That's a ninety-six unit, five story apartment building. A lot of you may remember that from the, the crane that was up there for quite some time. Well, that crane's now, of course, been taken down. New owners bought the project and they're moving forward with, with the, bringing it to, to fruition. And then over in Midtown off of Seventh Avenue, we have the apartment projects by MGR Development. And that's going to include, that'd be the first phase of two buildings, the first phase being a hundred and fifty studio, one and two bedroom apartments on Wooden Square Loop. And you will see that built, construction activity already occurring. If you go over there, you'll see they're tearing up the parking lot behind the office buildings adjacent to Hunter Park, and they're going to build that four story building. They're already under construction. And then of course, in the, in the residential factor, we have the Canfield and Cypress multifamily projects, three hundred and twenty-four units. Monarch Metals, which is the old Orstrom mushroom facility, farm, mushroom facility. A hundred and fifty single family lots next to, out there by the Regional Athletic Complex. And then Ventura Crossing, which is fifty-three single family and sixteen townhomes over on Fifteenth Avenue Northeast. And then of course, the, the school district is moving forward with the Young Child and Family Center at their location at Nusqually Middle, adjacent to Nusqually Middle School at the old Bucknell Baseball Fields. So we do have some activity going forward that will help continue to bring in new activity. So those are, those are the things we track spot in time and identifying what our financial condition is going from year to year. But it's also important that we cast out and look out further to make sure we can anticipate, where our financial condition will be over a couple of years so we have time to prepare. And of course, in doing so, there's always that, you never can anticipate any of those disruptions, like say a pandemic or or a recession or those type of things. But we try the best we can to kind of create a predictable future. And so what we generally do is our finance team leads the effort to do a six-year financial strategy model. And I know council's been briefed on these before in previous retreats. And usually it's four different projections. One is a pessimistic, one is an optimistic, one is just a hundred percent expenditure of the budget, and the other one's the probable scenario. And I'm going to kind of just highlight the probable scenario that we have built into the, this year for getting ready for work over the next two or three years. This probable model has some several assumptions in there, which is a flatliner or less robust revenue growth because of the uncertain economic outlook, the slowing of development that we just talked about. And then of course, a sales tax continuing below the peak in twenty twenty-three for a couple of years. We're also anticipating long-term inflationary increases due cost of labor, as I think council has heard several times. You know, staff is our most important resource, but it also take, it also takes up over two thirds of our budget to cost that. And so every year, every year, that increase in cost to inflationary factors impacts the city. In this case, we build in a wage increase of average of four percent and benefits at six percent. And then of course, less budget savings in, in the sense of twenty twenty-four, labor is ninety-seven point five percent of budget. So we continue that out moving forward as well as we incorporate some of the line by line cost reduction strategies that are, that Troy led earlier this year. So what that projection shows us is we're still continuing with, oh, thank you. Running to that financial model is it shows that we still have some challenging times ahead if we don't take action and do some things to try to reduce that impact and shorten that gap. So if we do nothing, the scenario is with, with the balanced budget in twenty twenty-six. That continued out in twenty twenty-seven, that deficit will continue to grow with those inflationary factors for, for our cost of services with the flatter, flatter increases in revenues. And of course, this, this model also does include anticipation for public defense standard, costs associated with that, maintenance operation for the police station, Cuyahoga Park, the train facility and Rack Phase Three MNO. So those future obligations are, for twenty twenty-six are built into this model as well going out. So what do we do? And again, this is intended to, you know, be part of this presentation to not say, okay, we're in a lot of trouble, but thousand times to work and take action. And over the last two, a year, or one year into a two-year process of taking a look at strategies to help address that, that growing deficit. And those strategies that we worked with council and starting with the retreat in last January and continuing on through this year include three, three prongs. The first prong being is looking and exploring low hanging fruit or revenue enhancements that may have some merit for, by the council to, to impose. That's really eight different potential revenue options that are available under our current RCW. And those are topics related to, like the gambling tax. As simple as or small things as fee recovery for public records customer body worn camera footage, technology fees, B and O tax, solid waste franchise fees, all those different pieces that we could, council can consider to impose that could kind of stabilize that, the budget going forward. The second prong is the investments in economic development strategies. And again, as we talked about over the last year, the investment strategies is the long, long game, right? You start doing those work now because it may take several years for that business to locate or something to go through the permitting process and takes that thirty-six months to come to real. So we ought to start working now to create an environment to create private investment so we can expand our commercial and commercial tax base, as well as increase some of our assessed valuation by getting more infill and density and more, you know, yield per acre. Again, this is being borne by a, a five-year economic development strategy that's being developed by Vanessa and her Community Economic Development Team that will be coming to council in December fifth to start briefing council on those measures. And then the third item is the expenditure reduction strategy, which is, you know, going into twenty twenty-six, that's where we're going to start looking at working with council and identifying priorities and essential services and have a, a plan in place that looks at reducing some of our expenditures going into the twenty twenty-seven budget. Then of course, to, as a combination of revenue enhancements and expenditure reductions that we can continue to move forward without having to rely on reserves to support our budget. Because again, I think everybody knows relying on reserves to do that is, is ultimately unsustainable. So back to the, the revenue enhancements and working with council. Again, as council's aware, we've had several work sessions over this year looking at the various topics. And this slide is just to kind of just show a glimpse of, these things are in process. And while some have already taken action, like the body worn camera fee recovery, public records request fee recovery. We still are, we're going to be working on things like the technology fees, the franchise solid waste fees, gambling tax and utility tax for cable into twenty twenty-six and, and continue to come back and get refined that, those opportunities for council to take final action on whether the council feels that that is an appropriate thing to, to measure. So again, that's, those pieces are in the work. So I wanted to start off the budget presentation with those factors in mind, just to kind of say, hey, yeah, we got a balanced budget, we got some challenges, we're working on that process. We started that work a year ago and that work will continue forward. But now I want to just kind of get into what are the parameters of the the twenty twenty-six proposed budget for council's consideration this year. So again, the total budget is just over, it's two hundred and twenty-four million, five, six hundred and eight thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars. The entire city of Lacey's budget is made up of thirty-one budget categories. However, for presentation purposes, you can really compensate it down to six primary categories. And the starting with the general fund, which is general fund category, then you also have your capital projects program at twenty point six million, your utility funds. You're also, you have your debt service funds, your special revenues, and then also your internal service funds. And I'll start going into deeper details of each one of those funds as we move forward in this presentation. So starting with the general fund. And the, the general fund budget for this year is seventy-four million, three hundred and forty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars. The general fund is, is an overall decrease from twenty twenty-five of about fourteen and a half million dollars. The general fund does support two hundred and seventy, seventy-six FTEs. Part of the reason for the decrease is because of the capital, because of the funding for the, there's transfers and grants and as well as some key projects that were transferred and out from reserves into the projects such as the police station. And also Cuyahoga Park Phase One A and, and the rack enhancement design. So those are kind of the reasons why we had a reduction between last year's general fund budget to this year's. So the general fund revenues is primarily made up of tax revenues. Fifty-eight percent of the general fund revenues are, are taxes. Permits and fees, those are through our Community Economic Development Department, our Public Works Development Review section are also about twenty-three percent of those funds. State shared revenues equals two percent. And then others which are transfers, grants and, and, and cost recovery fees are, make up the other seventeen percent. But focusing on the, the fifty-eight percent portion of taxes, sales tax is twenty, twenty-six percent of the general fund dollars. About nineteen point two nine million dollars of collections is our largest, but also most volatile tax revenue for the city. And then you see property tax coming in at nine point four two million, utility at nine point seven three. So so kind of looking at that sales tax history, if you recall the slides I talked to about the month over month slides and looking at more context. This is the budgeted sales tax receipts for going back to twenty fourteen. And you can see that steady rise. And then we had that adjustment in twenty twenty anticipated of the pandemic. Of course, that wasn't near as bad as we thought it would be. So that number is actually, collection was actually higher. And then as twenty, twenty-one going to today, last year we budget projected about nineteen point three million dollars in sales tax receipts. This year we adjusted that down to nineteen point two nine or a point one six percent decrease in, in taxes based on what we're seeing over the last twelve months. Property tax revenue, another key but more stable source, a smaller, but a smaller sport source of revenue. Property tax has steadily declined over the years. To this year, we're seeing a, we're projecting a three point seven five percent increase to nine point five two million dollars in collections. So roughly about a hundred and forty thousand dollars of increased tax collection based off of increased assessed valuation combined with the one percent allowance for tax increase. This is a slide that generally shows our growth in assessed value of the whole community. That assessed value actually grew by three hundred and sixty-nine million dollars or three percent to a total of just under thirteen point six billion dollars in assessed value community wide. And again, I'll kind of put my plug into assessed value and the levy rate. Of course, as a total assessment, we can only collect a, a certain levy amount that's divided up by the increase in assessed value. So as assessed value grows, but our levy amount decreases or only increases a certain portion, that levy rate will continue to decrease in value. So going into twenty twenty-six, our levy rate's going to be just under seventy cents or sixty-nine cents per thousand. And so again, that's showing that inverse correlation between increased assessed value, the levy and the levy rate. And of course, when you apply that to an individual property, that property may increase in value. So you may see a decrease, but most likely you'll still see those slight increase in property tax because of the individual property increasing in value as well. But again, it's a, it's a steady revenue, but it doesn't, it's, it's, it doesn't bring as much yield as say their sales tax revenue. The other general fund sources tax, again, I mentioned the sales tax and utility tax. We also have the service fees as well as B and O tax at three points seven million and your indirect charges. So those are the complete, the primaries tax sources that make up funding the general fund dollars. So moving from revenues into expenditures, this is the various programs and departments that are funded out of the general fund and, and, and those tax sources. First off is public safety. This includes our police department, courts and services, prosecution. Public safety in our police department is about eighty-nine employees. And let me, let me take that back. In this particular slide, public safety is referring to just the police department. And their expenditures for twenty twenty-six is, is projected to be just over twenty-one million dollars. Then you have our public works department, that's all the functions in public works outside of the water sewer and stormwater utilities. They have about ninety-one and a half general fund employees. And their expected expenditures for twenty twenty-six is going to be twenty million. So think about those two numbers, go back to our largest revenue source of sales tax at nineteen point two. You can see some of the challenges we face as we climb that ladder. And then of course, we have our admin support services, which is our finance, HR, city managers, departments of thirty-four employees. On down to our parks, culture and recreation was their seventeen and a half. Community economic development twenty-two and human and social services at three, yeah, three employees at one point one. And again, you can look at all those various departments, all key departments to achieving the city mission, the public service, providing service to the community. And the challenges we face was continue those operations with our, our revenue sources today. And next I wanted to highlight just some of those more public facing service providers and the, and the cost to provide those services. The first is of course, parks, culture and recreation. And we like, you know, parks, culture, recreation is really, in addition to some of the community, work of the Community Economic Development Department, creates that quality of life in the community, that, that, that vibe, the activities, the programs, the park spaces. And in order to continue to provide those services as we see them today, that budget, which includes public works parks maintenance, is about eight point two million dollars. That also includes some of the dedicated funds for the Regional Athletic Complex that comes from the public facility district revenues. But again, there's programs in there that are key that provide a lot of activity, opportunity for families and individuals to enjoy either parks, swimming or classes or programs. So again, this is a very important function that adds that, that, that color to the community. And, and that's the overall cost today of what, what is to provide those services. I can go on and on about some of those programs and events. The other key thing is the cost to maintain our streets. This is just the streets portion of the public works operation budget. Streets and sidewalks were very, you know, are, have a high quality of service to make sure that our streets are safe. They're smooth, they're well marked and identified, the signs are good. And there's general maintenance and that budget alone is five million dollars. This does not include the transportation, transportation benefit district dollars. This is just the general maintenance and repair. And, and then also some of the sidewalk repair and maintenance. We do have five hundred thousand, just over four hundred thousand dollars dedicated yearly for sidewalk replacement and root, street tree root removal. And also we just added twenty thousand dollars to this year's budget for supplies to start marking sidewalks that have displacements of more than a three quarters of an inch. So those are programs that we need to do to make sure that both people can drive in their cars, ride their bikes and walk in their neighborhood safely. It's about five million dollars, not including our transportation benefit district monies, which I'll get to a little bit later. And then finally, the cost of public safety. This is another key piece that I think we're always, I think we're very proud of, of the safe community that the city of Lacey is and, and the model of policing that our police department does in terms of community based policing, building relationships. uh, based policing, building relationships, having, uh, interactions that are not just, uh, in the line of duty, but also in those festivals and events. We also, in addition to law enforcement, we also need to make sure we have funding for prosecution, jail services and court services. Um, for this coming year, that cost is going to be just over twenty-four million dollars of the budget. Um, and again, you know, as you look at that side note, to pay for public safety, it takes a hundred percent of our sales tax revenue and also, uh, fifty-one, just over, uh, just under fifty perc- two percent of our property tax revenue just to provide our public safety program. Uh, this, these numbers, there's, again, looking towards the future and what's could hap- what's coming down the, uh, the road, so to speak, is this, we also don't have to plan for the future for additional costs that are going to come up with, uh, district court. Our contract for services through district court, it expires at the end of twenty twenty-six, so we're going to need to start negotiating a new contract for those services in twenty twenty-seven, um, as well as we also, everybody's heard about the, uh, state supreme court's decision on public defense standards. So, we're going to need to start programming additional eighty thousand dollars per year over ten years. That combined total is going to be around seven, seven hundred five thousand dollars, well, excuse me, just for next year, though, that would bring our total for, uh, public defense to seven hundred and five thousand dollars. So, we're trying to anticipate some of these things and figure out how we navigate and bring in revenues to address those or adjust our internal budgets to accommodate those, those future needs. Um, and again, of course, our most important part of our, uh, any of our budgets is our most precious resource is our, our, um, our staff, and we are in the people-serving business, so we need staff and people to provide services to the community. And as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, uh, wages and benefits for our staff, um, in the general fund is over two-thirds of the overall expenditure levels in the general fund. Um, these are all the different expenditures of, um, operating supplies, utilities, um, and miscellaneous and contractual services, but that salary and benefits is the big driver of our expenditures, um, in our budget. And just to kind of give a snapshot of a year-to-year, um, again, we had a modest increase in, um, in our, um, well, let me take, let me take a step back. This slide, what it, what it, what it shows is just the year-over-year increase in wages and benefits without adding new, new FTEs. So, in twenty, from, going from twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six without additional FTEs, it's about a four point, three percent increase or about one point million, one point eight million dollars for wages and benefits. I'll get, I'll talk later in my presentation about our different, uh, years of how we added employees. Um, in twenty twenty-four, we added, uh, about fifteen new employees. Only one of them was, was, uh, didn't have direct funding associated to them, but saying that, that year with that additional fifteen employees, the different, or the difference in wages in twenty twenty-four and going into twenty twenty-five was over four million. So, again, depending on what you add in your, your budget, also, it's going to have a, um, exponential factor going forward, so we have to be cautious of that as we look at our future, uh, budget requests in light of, um, revenues. And then this next slide really kind of hits the point in terms of some of the, the challenges. So, this slide, in the rows, you'll see, um, our sales tax property, our, uh, uh, six primary general fund tax revenues, and what we see in terms of projected increases or decreases, and then you add in that, um, um, one point eight million dollar wages and benefit increase of just moving, turning over our, uh, our salaries going into the next year, you can see that creates about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar difference. Um, that's, again, kind of, kind of, just to illustrate that when we talk about a strategic deficit, those are the things we're talking about is, is how we build in that revenue to address those costs, and then, of course, that also includes looking at expenditures. But saying that, you know, next section of the slide, I want to talk about some of the investments we're making in, out of the general fund going, going into this budget year. Um, and again, as I mentioned before, the, uh, the, uh, most important resource we have is our, our staff resources, and again, it's because that's where people, uh, service business and is sort of illustrated by this picture. Uh, in the general fund, we're looking to technically add one position and, um, and then, and finish the transition to, uh, our fourth, uh, police lieutenant, uh, position. So, the one new position is in our water resources department. It's going to be a capital projects position. What we're seeing is we need to have, uh, some, a little bit of a, a position to help with, uh, workflow as well as capital improvement program management, and, um, the, um, and so this position will help with that, that, uh, department. But the core thing is while it is considered a general fund position, it's going to be billable to the different, the three utilities, and so that's where the direct funding comes in, so it's not a, a new impact to our general fund, um, revenues. The police lieutenant transition, I, I mentioned that, just continuing that, where, um, it was a process started cer- uh, three or four years ago where we had, uh, going to a four lieutenant model, and so as the commanders, uh, phased out, we would bring in the, uh, the four lieutenants. This January, but it will be that fourth one, and so while we're recognizing that as a pre-planned expense, it's covered by prop- proposition one dollars, dedicated funding, it's not a new position because technically the commander will be retiring at the end of this year, so it'll be a, um, neutral in terms of, uh, position numbers. Other investments, um, again, going along the model and the approach of looking at strategic investments, but also with dedicated funding, um, we are looking to continue to invest in the food truck and night, night market program. I think that's grown over the years and become very successful. Um, so we're establishing, uh, just under fifty-five thousand dollars to continue that into, uh, the coming year. Also, uh, the makerspace is a continual, they're looking at two hundred thousand dollars to continue to support operations of Lacey makerspace. We're starting to see that starting to get its, its legs under it. We're seeing that it's, uh, memberships is continuing to grow, but also, more importantly, there's, um, um, apprenticeship programs going through, through the partnership with Ajax, and we're starting to see a little bit more business involvement and, and also s- uh, uh, entrepreneurism, that this is one of those things that we see as building more small business or supporting small business, which again, becomes a return on investment. And then, of course, the, uh, four hundred and three thousand dollars towards the, uh, annexation strategy. Council's been well aware, we've been working on this annexation study for the unincorporated growth area, we're looking, council's given, uh, go ahead to continue the next step of exploring a potential interlocal agreement with Thurston County, how to implement that. As part of that process, if it continues to move forward, we're going to need to fund a s- a more detailed, uh, economic analysis as well as plan for community engagement. So, this four hundred and three thousand dollars is intended to work towards that in twenty twenty-six. All three of these, uh, initiatives are coming out of the Strategic Investment Reserve Fund or recommended to come out of Strategic Investment Reserve Fund, um, that the council set aside for these type of, um, um, economic efforts. Also, we have reserves related to climate initiate, initiative, uh, initiatives. We are looking to continue that program with, uh, continue the, uh, LED streetlight replacement program at, at two hundred thousand dollars as well as, uh, continue to, uh, work with the regional, uh, coalition on, uh, climate action and fund another two hundred thousand dollars of, uh, climate action and resilient implementation measures. Uh, that's going to include continuing the rebate program for, uh, energy, um, Thurston, energize Thurston as well as other efforts in, in trying to, uh, provide incentives to have people do, um, you know, implement those climate action programs. Also, you know, we do still need to maintain our, our facilities as best we can going forward. You know, again, you, you, sometimes it gets, uh, missed or, or the thought process of, you know, the, the maintenance dollars can be weaned out, but we do make sure we have quality facilities for people to utilize. So, we have, um, um, two projects shown on the screen. Uh, we need to replace a rotting beam in the Lacey Community Center, um, in the entryway, um, about twenty-five thousand dollars, and also, we need to, uh, put a new roof onto the Virgil Clarkson Senior Center. Uh, both those, uh, funds or projects are funded out of, uh, building reserves set up for these purposes. And we also have some, um, other buildings that also need to have, uh, some repairs or maintenance to have them. Uh, park storage building, uh, at, down at shop operations, need some, uh, maintenance of its, um, uh, exterior siding, and again, as we know, the, uh, the council's worked through the capital facilities plan and identified that a future capital facilities need is expansion and replacement of the shop facility. However, that may take several years there, so in the meantime, we need to make sure we keep it as, um, uh, maintained as possible so we don't have diminishing returns. So, um, and then also, our elevators are old enough now that we were notified by the, uh, elevator maintenance company that we need to modernize those systems, otherwise they will not be able to continue to provide maintenance and find parts to support, uh, their operations. So, we have two elevators in city hall, and each one will cost around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to modernize. This is one of those situations where we say, well, wait a minute, we only have so many, uh, dollars in, uh, building reserves, so with one elevator located right over here by the city manager's office, uh, going up to the second and third floor, the, the second elevator being over in, uh, by, uh, the police department, and not knowing what the future, uh, use of the, the eventually vacated police department section of city hall is, decided to propose this, modernizing this elevator, uh, in city hall by city manager's office, and holding off on that second one until we see what our facility needs are going into next year so that we're not spinning down, uh, our, our reserves too quickly. Also, in terms of accessibility, we still have the ability to go up this elevator and access the second floor over above the police station, so we're not limiting accessibility issues. And then, of course, uh, with, based on state, uh, uh, requirements, every, uh, building, I think it's over forty thousand square feet in size, must, uh, do an assessment to make sure that's meeting the Washington State Clean Building Standards compliance. So, that compliance date is, uh, in twenty twenty-seven. So, we're doing, um, uh, hiring a consultant to do a evaluation of city hall because it meets that threshold to show that it has energy compliance. This is one of those things where it's a state mandate and it's got good intent behind it, but it's also one of those elements that drives the cost to how we are able to do business. Again, continuing those, um, programs and services, uh, we are have, uh, proposed budget, uh, funding in the budget to continue our human services grant program, uh, the three hundred thousand dollars per year. Uh, that'd be, uh, you know, through a process that's administered by the, our human, uh, services commission. We also have dollars still in there with the rapid response team, uh, cleanup operations, uh, the mobile outreach team as well as, um, the regional housing council. There's an agreement with that ILA that every partner of the regional housing council, um, provides a half percent of the sales tax collection for affordable housing purpose to be administered through the regional housing council, and the same with the, um, Senate House Bill fourteen oh six. That's also part of the agreement that, that is this Lacey share for, um, recording fees that go for affordable housing purposes. Those two funds are, um, pooled at the regional level and, uh, part of the, the funding that the RAC recommended, recommends, uh, distribution, distribution on an annual basis. Um, continue the neighborhood grant program, and then, based on past, uh, uh, recent council direction, also included a provision there for the cultural event grant program, the twenty-five thousand dollars. Now, that is a new program, but we are able to take reduced funding in an already existing program, the dispute, uh, uh, resolution, uh, dispute resolution center contract to shift some of those dollars into this program as a pilot program for this coming year. So, that is something that, based on council's direction, that included in this year's budget recommendation. So, that's the, that's the staffing and program investments out of the general fund. Uh, next, I want to talk a little bit about the general fund capital projects. Um, so with the capital projects that'll be funded out of the general fund, this year we're projecting about twenty, just over, uh, twenty point, uh, twenty million, six hundred and thousand dollars. The, um, again, this is a decrease in our capital bought project by about sixty-five million dollars. Reason is, we just finished two major, uh, projects with Cuyahoga Park Phase One A and, and most of the police station funding. Um, so that's the reason why the difference, and this is getting down to historical nature. The, the other part of it is we had a lot of big projects come online over the last four years. This year is really less on project, uh, start, uh, construction start, it's more getting into design. Um, but just as a, to walk through some of the, the projects that are coming out of that twenty million dollars, this is the police station. Uh, this has been shown for three years now on various stages. We're down to the last three point two million dollars of the project to be expended in twenty twenty-six. I think this is one of those projects that's a big lift. I think everybody in this, the council and the directors and, um, and everyone in the organization should be proud of because this is a, a big project that you don't get to do very often, and it's been on schedule and on budget, and we're looking to have it substantially completed by the end of the year dependent on delivery of a generator and looking at, um, opening it in, towards the end of first quarter of twenty twenty-six. I'm looking at the chief just to make sure I got my timeline right, he's got the thumbs up. Um, but again, we are programming in three point two million dollars. That was a, that is a sixty-one point five million dollar product overall.
So, when, when are, when will it be? When will we be fully in the police station?
By the end of, um, first quarter of twenty twenty-six, February, March.
February, March of next year.
Yep. Well, if, if we are able to receive the generator, the generator takes five to six weeks to stand up, commission and, and test. Once that's in, then we can start doing the move-in, and that'll take some time, and then it'll be, uh, ready for the grand opening. Um, another, uh, item in the capital projects, this is more in design, uh, based on the direction of the council, is the rack field enhancements. This is the conversation that evolved from, um, the rack phase three program to now looking at the available revenues from the PFD and what we can do in terms of improvements and focus on those improvements on converting, um, field two from grass to turf, adding lights, um, adding, uh, beachers in field one, and then we also are looking at, um, adding additional elements to that that can be on, on a multi-bid tabs and what we did with the police station and training center to add in more amenities that could be conducive for, um, a, a, a higher-level professional soccer team. Um, but again, those are, right now, in preliminary designs, and we're scheduled to check in with council to kind of overview those designs, uh, work session for, in, with council on November twenty-fifth, where we'll kind of look at where we are in that scope of work, what we're seeing on preliminary designs and preliminary estimates, getting ready to, on track to have thirty percent design by the end of this year. It's important that we keep on that schedule because with the public facilities district, we will need to issue bonds, um, in twenty twenty-seven before the current bonds expire in order to preserve that funding for another ten years and be able to make these improvements as well as, uh, the improvements at the Hands-on Children Museum and Olympia are planning as the other portion of the regional PFD pa- partnership. And I mentioned, uh, previously that we also have the transportation benefit district funding, and we're looking at an overlay program in twenty twenty-six about five point three million dollars. Um, this is, you can see all the lists of the streets that'll be touched with, uh, the, the overlay program funded by the transportation benefit district. In twenty twenty-five, we accomplished one point, uh, one lane miles of streets that were, uh, overlaid or improved or repaired. In twenty twenty-six, we're anticipating to, um, um, rehab one point five mi- centerline miles of streets. There's two things I want to stress about this, and I'll, I'll talk about maybe sidewalks first. Um, as I mentioned, in the general fund dollars for our street operations, there is a four hundred and eleven thousand dollars that goes towards sidewalk, uh, repairs. In the transportation benefit district, we allocated five hundred thousand dollars towards sidewalk repairs. Um, in twenty twenty-five, the year, um, we pulled those dollars to do about, um, program about one point five million dollars of the work, about a half a million that's going to carry over into twenty twenty-six, and we're also adding another five hundred thousand in twenty twenty-six. We, you know, of course, there's, there's, um, the issues with sidewalk safety, and as we become a maturing city and, and, uh, as growing, our infrastructure's starting to age, so some of those neighborhoods that are built in the late nineties or, or two thousands of the street trees, you're starting to see, um, sidewalks being affected by tree roots and other factors that are causing, uh, upheavals and unsafe circumstances. So, based on a administrative policy of how we have, uh, do maintenance on sidewalks, we are, uh, continue to move forward on budgeting dollars to, uh, two things. One is to mark those sidewalks with, um, white, uh, white paint that are, um, are separated or, or have a, uh, uh, difference of about three quarters of an inch. So, again, to create, uh, uh, visibility and more safety, and then replace, we had, did an inventory of all the And then replace, we had, did an inventory of all the sidewalks and identified all the different locations and distances or depth of separation and prioritize replacement and repairs of those sidewalks on a priority basis. Priority one being, just lost my notes, but priority one being sidewalks that are over two, two inches in separation. Priority two being those sidewalks that are between one and one and a quarter and two inches in separation. Priority three being three quarters of one and a quarter inch separation. And then priority four being those less than one and a quarter inch separation. We have a lot of different places throughout the community that have these issues and so we have to prioritize that work. The, and again, when we look at areas where we also maximize efficiencies, we're not just going to hot scotch just to all the priority markers. We're going to try to hit neighborhoods and address it all. That program is important because I want to raise it to the council of the budget because that is the, the process and the policy is that we will continue to do that sidewalk repair and placement based on the budget, budgeted dollars that council authorized for that particular year. And again, that's, I think you're seeing some of that activity this year. You've probably seen some comments from neighborhoods about the removal of trees. Part of the challenge when we start making those safer sidewalks is we have to remove the trees and replant. But again, as we look at these programs, we're replanting trees after we remove those trees that have damaged and upheaved those sidewalks. And ultimately is try to create safer situations for people to walk of, people of all ages to walk in their neighborhoods. Other capital projects that we have programmed this year, again, those are the primary construction efforts. We are really focusing on right away acquisition and design. Probably the key project I want to highlight here is the program for starting design work on the College Street and Seventh Avenue Roundabout. This is part of the MOU we have with St. Martin's Abbey and MGR Development to build a roundabout at College and Seventh. This also is something that will provide better access in the midtown area and help facilitate a gateway feature, not only coming into the main part of Lacey, but also in the midtown and connect a safe pedestrian crossing across College Street, connecting the students at St. Martin's to be able to access over into the commercial services of, of midtown. So a key project and we're going to be starting design in, in the beginning of 2026 with the idea that we would be able to have, go out to bid in sometime in 2027. Yes, councilor Cox?
Can you tell me why the roundabout design for college at 16th is so much bigger than the others?
I might have to get back to it because it may have, I don't know, Scott, if you have any?
Sure he does.
It's, it's, it's the stage of design is where that number starts growing. So in terms of college street and roundabout design, that's $550,000 to program to get the process started with the RFQ and start doing that preliminary work. Eventually we'll do a budget amendment to add additional dollars from the arterial street funds to kind of build that redesign. As you do these multi-lane roundabouts, especially with something as complicated as the College Street corridor, that design cost goes up. So this is in the later stages of design and getting ready for the raise grant. Oh, I just found my notes through the priority. I was right. So that's, that's the, the general fund, details of the general fund and going into the proposed budget for 2026. Next, I want to talk about the special revenue fund. These are, there's two particular categories in the special revenue bucket. Overall, it's the budget for special revenues is $627,338. The two buckets that fill this up is one is the Hicks Lake Management District. This is a self-assessed group of property owners that have ties to Hicks Lake. They assess themselves a certain amount of dollars based on their property frontage on the lake, lakefront frontage. And those dollars are used to do lake, lake management, water quality, vegetation removal and the like. The city of Lacey, since the majority, all of Hicks Lake is in the city of Lacey limits, becomes the fiduciary for that special assessment district. And so we manage those dollars and they, they are self, you know, governed otherwise. And then as long as they're within their bodies, we will dispense those dollars for their projects and, and for it. So it's, that's why it's in that special revenue category. The second one is lodging tax. That is, as the council is fully aware of the lodging tax process, we have the lodging tax advisory committee that's chaired by our deputy mayor Miller. And they look at providing funding recommendations for lodging tax dollars that come in from stays hotels in the city of Lacey. It's a two, it's a combined total of 4% tax for what they call heads and beds. And that 4% collections comes to the lodging tax revenues. And then the lodging tax advisory committee makes recommendations to council how to distribute those dollars to tourism facilities, tourist promotion and events that provide, that bring people into the community and prefer to stay, stay over the night. And make that recommendation to council for final adoption. This year, our schedule's a little bit off. In the past years, we've always incorporated a lodging tax advisory committee recommendation of all their funding allocations into the budget. We're kind of mixing it up this year and that recommendation is going to come separately to council at I believe the November, the first meeting in November. And, and so council will be able to see those separately and make the final, take the final action on them. In terms of the budgeting purposes, we have the total revenue amounts and so as we go into January, we'll be able to incorporate the specific allocations and be able to have those funds available in the first part of January going into 2026. Yes?
A quick question. I just recently found out that the county is actually collecting lodging tax dollars too. And they're not collecting it on hotels and motels, but they're, they're collecting it on VRBOs and those types of stays. So if the, if the county is able to charge lodging tax for those types of stays, are, are cities allowed? And if they are allowed, is that something that we should look into? Because, you know, this is something that was new to me and I figure if the county has the ability to do it, you would think the cities would too. Do we have any information on that?
Looking to defer over to Shannon to provide some insight?
We are actually currently collecting tax on those short-term stays, so there are currently taxes coming in from those sources.
Okay, so we, we currently are collecting it, so we just don't, we just don't list it here.
Separately, yeah.
Okay, that's new. Do we know how much we collect a year from, from outside of hotels and motels?
I don't know. At the top of my head, that's a relatively small percentage of the whole.
Sure.
We just don't have a lot of that activity here in Lacey.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
That reminds me of something I haven't mentioned. As part of our general fund improvements, we are also set aside $100,000 onboard OpenGov, which is a business licensing reporting software that will help with tracking all of our tax reporting of all our businesses. And so in that situation, the question is a great question because those RMBs are subject to business license in the state as well. And then we can track those things much better. And so that's probably why we're catching them up is their business license requirements and reporting at the state level. Let's see. So that's conclusion of the special funds and so next we'll jump into our enterprise funds, which enterprise funds are those utilities that we know so well, the water, wastewater and stormwater utilities. Overall, all three.
I just wanted to go back to college and 16th.
Oh.
So college and 16th is going to be so much more expensive this next year for property right away acquisition.
Okay.
Yeah, very minimal design work this next year, but just property acquisition.
That's where I was figuring it. If you see a number that big, it has to be a property acquisition.
Thank you, Scott.
So the utility funds, overall 116 million dollar budget for all three utilities. And again, those utilities are very important for, to the day to lives of our community. You have 3 billion gallons of potable water produced annually, 20, out of 20 wells with a distribution network of 400 miles of water mains. For, just to kind of put context, if you extend those 400 miles of water mains end to end, they'd run from Lacey to the city of Spokane with some left over. And again, you think about all the elbows and bins and valves and everything else, that takes a lot to maintain. Likewise, with our wastewater utility, it collects about 1.6 billion gallons of sewer annually and transports that sewer down to the Lot Regional Facility or the Martin Way Reclaimed Water Station. We have 48 sewage lift stations and over 200 miles of sewer mains. And then thirdly, the stormwater utility, you know, with over 6,500 catch basins that are maintained by the city and 47 storm facilities and over 100 miles of storm system and pipe. So there's a lot of infrastructure that's in the ground that people don't necessarily see, but they realize and benefit from on a daily basis that sometimes we don't realize. So in terms of those utilities, this slide shows the breakout of the, of how those utilities are funded from in the blue, that's the annual maintenance and operation. So in the water utility, we annually for maintenance and operations bend to about $26.5 million. In the yellow or yellow color is our capital expenditures and this year we're programmed for $26 million. And, and then the green, of course, is the debt service on the six, $6 million. Wastewater, we're looking at spend on operation and maintenance of about just under $30 million annually with about $12.8 million of capital projects and $46 million in debt service. And then, of course, in stormwater, it's a newer utility that's been building. Maintenance operation, we're looking at $6.2 million this coming year, $2.5 million in capital and just under, or just over $2 million in debt. Looking at the, the water capital projects and again, in terms of funding the utilities, the water and sewer and, and the storm are all the same. You have the conferencing plan that supports that utility and then you have your capital improvement program that identifies all the needs of of that operating that facility and expanding it and rehabilitating the certain components of it. And that gets into establishing our water capital improvement program. So this is a six-year program, identify about $160 million of expenditures over that six years for capital improvements or rehabilitation of the system and specifies in each year the scheduled amount that's anticipated. And so in 2026, as I mentioned, is about $25 million, $25 million in capital expenditures. So how do we pay for that? And that generally comes from our rate programs. Whoops. In terms of rates, again, those rates are established by, again, looking back at the, the comp plan, what are the needs to in a six-year capital improvement program, where are the needs to build and maintain the system and the staffing to operate it. And so that projection is built into our rate study. And back in 2022, council adopted a multi-year rate study that extends out to 2027. And that program for water, the rate will again go up 5.25%, which will equate to a monthly charge of about $42.80. That, that rates, that continual rate's going to continue through 2027. So coming in 2027, we'll be revisiting that multi-year rate study, also looking at the next cast out of the capital improvement program. So that's something that's going to be coming for council in, in a year's time.
Have a quick question. I, I know that when we did a six-year comp plan, we, we said that we were going to take out, you know, as you show here, $4 million of debt in 2024 and $6 million of debt in 2025. To, to my knowledge, we actually haven't taken out debt, have we?
We actually have. So the, we have a $10 million corporate works board loan that we drew down over these two years. Well, actually, we're making the final draws in 2025, so we have borrowed 10 million so far.
Okay.
So again, same thing as water, wastewater, same type of process. Your comp plan develops your capital improvement program and then your, ultimately your rates. So wastewater, the capital improvement program had a total of $58 million expenditures over the six years and 10 million program for 2026. Whoops. And then, of course, equating out to that multi-year rate study similar to water on the, you know, going out to 2027. So in 2026, the Lacey rate increase will be a continued, the standard, the consistent 9.5%, which will equate to a, a charge of $36.27. That's for the Lacey portion. That's for the conveyance pipes. That's one of the things that gets challenging with, with wastewater is with the sewer bill because it also charged for services that the Lacey or Lot wastewater treatment plant provides as well. And so in their estimated increase, their, their monthly charge will be about $48.95. So the bottom line bill to Lacey customers will be around $85.22 on a, on a ERU basis. And of course, stormwater as well. It's, it's rate structure is set for 2026 at four and a half percent. And that will equate to an increased assessment or monthly charge of about $15.46 for funding the stormwater utility. So this is a slide that kind of pulls all the Lacey utility rates together. On the left-hand side was the rates currently in 2025. On the right-hand side are the rates that are projected for 2026. As you can see, there is about a eight dollar, it's over eight dollar increase to Lacey households for the combined utility rates between paying for stormwater, lot, wastewater and water. So of course, with those capital improvement programs, I'll talk a little bit about some of the, the investments that are going to be occurring. Again, this is also the location or the fund that's going to also include two new positions. One of those positions is in the utility billing to provide a new position to help with reorg and workflow in utility billing and plus with customer service and, and management of our billing systems. That will add a lot, much needed capacity for that division of, of the city. And then the other position is the journey level technician, maintenance tech in stormwater. As part of stormwater comp plan and the rate study, it identified the need for adding this employee to continue to work on the expanded system. And so that, those positions are both funded by utilities, utility billing positioned by, by sewer and water utilities and journey level tech by the stormwater fund. And so again, these are two new positions, but they're from dedicated funding sources to support those positions. Then in general, facilities improvements, as you can see here from this list on our water system, we have several projects slated for this year from either design to construction. The, you have some rehabilitation of our, one of our Hawk Prairie reservoirs, developing a test well out in, in our system, banning some mains and then, of course, continue to work on the Madrona and West Side Wells pH treatment program. In wastewater, we have a lot of lift station work, continue to work to improve those lift stations to continue their function and handle capacity. And then in stormwater, we have some work to rehabilitate the Jubilee Stormwater Pond and also work with some stormwater improvements around lift station 01. Yes?
So the Jubilee Stormwater Pond, that's not maintenance by the Association, Hawk Prairie Community Association?
There's, there's a agreement in place and Troy, you?
Yeah, we're actually entering a kind of a stage of transition in terms of our obligations to make sure that private ponds are actually maintained. So I think there'll be a further discussion in terms of how those costs might be reimbursed. So, but yeah, they're certainly a conversation that'd be had.
Thank you.
So next, we'll talk about our, our, our budget for related to debt. Right now for 2026, our debt service budget is going to, is about $2.4 million. That, that comprises of, you know, again, this slide here shows what our legalized debt capacity is. But again, legalized debt capacity doesn't mean we can afford it. So, you know, technically, the, we're, in, in 2024, our debt is around $14 million. That currently does not include the debt we just issued for the police station. That police station final assessment will occur and so going into 2025, that, that debt obligation will increase up to around just over $30 million approximately. But again, what this slide really, really demonstrates is we are in good position related to debt. We don't have the We don't have these financial obligations that if we can't make, we have to pull some from or else we've been really good at managing our debt and being very strategic with it and making sure that we have the revenues that can support it. So one of those debts is one that we have one voter approved debt that is a assessment on the property tax. That is the twenty fifteen bonds that were issued for park improvements. It was a refund measure from the oh six bond. That outstanding balance is three hundred and sixty four thousand dollars. Our final payment will be in twenty twenty six, so that bond will go off the books. So that excess levy rate you see at the bottom of the slide of point zero two seven one per thousand will go off the property tax rolls in twenty twenty seven. So again, we're paying off that final payment for a bond that started in two thousand and six, was refunded in twenty fifteen. And again, this demonstrates the value of these bonds because with that, we were able to build a multitude of parks improvement projects ranging from Rainier Vista and other parks throughout the community to provide amenities and and facilities for enjoyment of of our neighborhoods and and public.
Will that be a reduction from our sixty nine cents total and then putting us somewhere around sixty seven, sixty six and a half?
That'd be actually, that's in addition. That does, that's not included in the sixty nine cent total. That sixty nine cents total, I'm looking at Troy's confirmation, is our property tax assessment. This excess levy rate goes on top of it.
Right. Okay. So so it'll just, it'll go away and we'll be left with the sixty nine cents.
Right. And I'll have a slide that kind of shows that a little bit later in the presentation.
All right.
So this is a a chart of all of our current debts. We have, we've issued debt in both our with water and stormwater bonds, O I D number twenty four revenue bonds in twenty seventeen. And of course, the the bond I just mentioned for parks, the we also have a public works trust fund loan for the work at the Majona and West Side Wells for water pH, pH treatment. And then, of course, the bonds that were issued for the police station. So this kind of shows our, at the bottom, our total payments combined. And you can see in the bottom row of the police station, our first payment in twenty twenty five was just over a million dollars. In twenty twenty six, that will jump to one point three, just over one point three million dollars. The reason is, is our first payment was interest only in a partial year because we issued late in the in the first quarter. So going into twenty twenty six, we'll start our full bond payment with interest and principal on that on that debt. So total obligations is just over, just three point six million dollars in bond payments. And again, those are sourced by revenue bonds except for that parks bond, which is property, excess property tax assessment. Again, that will go off the books starting in twenty twenty seven. All right, jumping into internal services funds. These are the funds that are very important to make sure that we have the equipment and resources that can, our employees can, you know, have to do the work that they need to do for our community. So our internal service fund budget this year is is going to be ten point five million dollars or just over ten point five million dollars. And what that is broken up into two different parts. We have the equipment rental fund. So all of our, all the vehicles we buy, we put on a depreciation schedule and we charge ourselves the cost for replacing that vehicle on a on an annual basis plus an inflation factor, I think it's around five percent. And depending on the vehicle and usage, that depreciation schedule can be three or five years. And once that is depreciated, then we have, in theory, we'd have the funds to replace those vehicles. So this equipment rental fund is the sum of all those vehicles we have in our fleet that are on a depreciation vehicle, over three hundred vehicles. We do the same thing over in our technology, our computers and cell phones, and we charge that rate and so that we have funds to replace those things when those equipment need to be upgraded or become obsolete. So in our informational services budget, we have just over four million dollars in that schedule. So going into our fleet enhancements for this year, these are the vehicles that we're going to be replacing, that are, that are ones that have been depreciated out, except for there are two vehicles on there, the Ford Lightning under the water category as well as the John Deere eighty five P, which is a smaller kind of backle trickle. It's kind of picture of it in the right hand quarter, quarter, the corner of the slide. Those are the new vehicles being purchased under the water utility. The rest of those vehicles are being purchased to replace existing vehicles that depreciate out. One of the challenges we've discovered with our depreciation schedule is we, all those vehicles that we're replacing this year in their replacement fund did not have enough money to cover them. And so we had to adjust dollars from from different funds to to I think around a couple hundred thou, two hundred thousand dollars. So going forward in our financial planning, we're going to be working in twenty twenty six with the finance team and our fleet manager to figure out, okay, what vehicles can we extend a little bit further on the depreciation depending on their wear and tear and use? And let's really look at our inflation factors and make sure we have dollars that can keep up with inflation so that we replace those. We don't have these shot, the surprise charges at the end of the day.
Yeah, I think you might have answered the question, but we didn't have enough money in our set aside because the cost of these vehicles and this equipment grew faster than we were anticipating.
Correct.
So we need to start saving more because we don't know what will come in the future for those costs.
Correct, yes. I think currently we use a five percent depreciation rate. I'm kind of jealous because and, you know, five percent seems like a lot, but again, those costs, just in a three year, five year, depending on the vehicle, has jumped exponentially. So we might be looking at, depending on the wear and tear, if it's a pool vehicle that has just general, you know, travel, used as carpooling use, that might be on a more of an eight year cycle. And then, you know, and maybe even look at our patrol fleet, there's some that have heavy usage that they may be on a three, maybe moving to five, and some of the more administrative vehicles, we move out to a eight to ten, just to kind of break that out and make a little bit more predictable schedule. Those are all things that we'd be working on going into twenty twenty six in preparation for future years. All right, so now the kind of the value proposition of the the presentation, note we only have about forty more slides.
Ha ha.
So the first one is just kind of, again, you know, we look at, when we go out and buy goods or pay our tax bills, we look at the the total number and we think it implies the city of Lacey. And this slide is just to illustrate our sales tax. Our current sales tax is in the city of Lacey is is a nine point seven percent. So if you buy a hundred dollar item that's subject to sales tax, that collection off that hundred dollar is nine dollars and seventy cents. The city only receives eighty five cents of that, that nine dollars and seventy cents. The five point four plus goes to the state and then you have some junior taxing districts that also collect on that. I think when you look at that number, and it's really hard because again, it's not what's coming to the city, it's the overall tax burden, it's challenging, but you look at that number and the and the services you get for that cost is pretty exponential at the local level. And again, it's really looking at thinking local and having the community understand that, you know, those those dollars you spent that are used locally are providing that local service to them. It's the direct service. Same thing for property tax. You know, the property tax distribution and of course, that's going to depend on, thank you, that's going to depend on, you know, the value of the property being assessed, but in general sense, of that talk, property tax dollar, forty one percent goes to school districts, twenty one, over twenty one percent goes to the state, fifteen percent goes to fire district, eight percent to county, seven percent goes to the city. And then all other junior taxing collective combined, six point seven percent. So again, we are a small piece of the overall tax burden that people see. And then equating to the, you know, a house in the city of Lacey or a property that is in twenty twenty six assessed at five hundred thousand dollars. And again, you know, that's not commensurate, there's a lot of properties in basically that are more or less, but we just kind of pick a number. But a house that's that's five hundred thousand dollars in assessed value in twenty twenty six, that house in twenty twenty five may have been assessed at four hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars. But when you apply the local property tax to the, in twenty twenty six, that's that point six nine, sixty nine cents. And you have that excess levy rate, that creates a combined levy rate of seventy one dollars or, excuse me, point, just under seventy two cents. That's a tax bill that Lacy collects on that five hundred thousand dollar house of three hundred and fifty nine dollars and eighty cents. You divide that by twelve months on a monthly payment, that's thirty dollars a month. And you think about all the services that you receive, that thirty dollars a month on that house. And again, it varies from house to house and person to person. That's quite a bit of service delivery. Compared to previous year, that is of overall a three dollar and forty five cent increase to that tax bill for that particular house that was assessed at four hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars in twenty twenty five and five hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty six. And again, it goes back to that struggle with understanding property tax where you have your overall levy allowance, what you can collect, divided by the overall assessed value of the community. And then it's applied at a levy rate to the individual assessed value of the property. And that's where you kind of get those differences where you have a decrease in levy, but your individual assessment may go up a few dollars from the previous year. And this this slide is just to show budget comparison on that same five hundred thousand dollar house in twenty twenty six compared to twenty twenty five. You're going to see down that row at three dollar and forty five cents in your property tax, water about two dollars and a cent, wastewater three dollars and fifteen cents and stormwater about sixty seven cents for a combined nine hundred, nine dollars and twenty, excuse me, nine dollars and twenty eight cents per month compared to fourteen dollars and sixty one cents per month. Now, that's just increase over previous year, that nine dollars and nineteen cents in twenty twenty five property tax is compared to an increase to twenty twenty four, and that could have been a different assessment schedule. So it it's hard to compare apples to apples because you have so many different factors that move in that that adjust. So in summary, here's my thirty slides. This this proposed budget, it makes substantial investments in our public safety. So combined with law enforcement, homeless response or the community resource units and the the court systems and and all of that, we were investing about twenty, just over twenty seven million dollars in public safety. In streets, you take in the capital program and the operations of the of the public works department as well as the TBD district, we're investing over seventeen and a half million dollars in our street infrastructure. And I forgot to mention when I was talking about the TBD, I was talking about the sidewalk piece, but again, I just want to reiterate the importance of that TBD program. That five and a half million dollars that we put in to rehabilitate and make sure we have safe streets and sidewalks and all that. It's up, that TBD is a, is up for renewal in twenty, early twenty twenty seven, and it's really critical that we continue to have that funding source because if we lose that funding source, that that annual investment in street maintenance will cause a exponential decline in the the building roads. So again, that street infrastructure investment of seventy half million dollars, I think, is a key number. Can we do the utility funds of over one hundred and sixteen million dollars a total between all three utilities? And then, of course, continuing our investment in parks, culture and recreation at around nine million dollars. Other investments, again, we looked at positions and how we deliver service and expand resources as with a growing city. This slide I wanted to throw in there because this kind of gives a perspective of over the years and what we're looking at adding in twenty twenty six. And you can kind of see that we kind of expanded staffing as the cities or as the communities grow. I would, you know, argue that we haven't been able to keep pace, but we kept, kept a pace. And of course, you see like in twenty twenty four, we had fifteen positions added to the budget. One thing I want to note about those fifteen positions is, one, we had two in the general fund. One was a digital forensic investigator that we needed to be able to support PD in terms of investigating things that had in cyber or online aspects. We also added a communications manager, but that wasn't a direct funding out of the general fund. That was a combination of savings and a contract we had with TC Media and bringing communications in-house. So out of those fifteen positions, fourteen of them had direct funding. The other, the other positions were either utility positions or police positions that were funded out of Proposition One. Then you move into twenty twenty five, again, those were positions that were funded out of direct funding with utilities and the same in twenty twenty six. And again, looking at this, we're being very cognizant of our resources and trying to be as strategic as possible, but also with that, we're not able to add capacity to keep up some level of services or expand a level of service or take on new things because of the limitations we have in staffing growth and funding. So this is another slide, just to kind of, I always kind of struggle with the ratios, but just we're being consistent with our staffing ratio overall per employees per one thousand. And again, with our population flattening out, those numbers will will maybe adjust a little bit differently going forward. So again, the the twenty twenty six proposed budget is balanced. This budget does implement council priorities that have been communicated to the staff. Does include three staff positions supported by dedicated funding enterprise funds. This does not add positions supported by the general fund. And I want to kind of touch upon that just real quick because sometimes we always talk about what's being added or what's being done. We don't really talk about what we have not decided not to include. In this case, we had at least six position requests that I I saw were very important and necessary that we were not able to include in this budget because of lack of identified funding. Those positions include a public records specialist and in the police department. Those are challenging because you have all these bodyboard camera footage, there's a lot of work in documenting, logging, and then also responding to requests and those respects, requests can spike depending on a circumstance that happens out in the community. Human services specialists and emergency management coordinator combined position. Again, we, as we grow in employees, we need administrative services to help support those employees and we're starting to see some imbalances there. And then, of course, with emergency management, we need to be prepared for that disaster and we need to continue to work towards that end. Journey level technician, maintenance technicians in streets as well as parks. And I want to really, this is a, these are requests that had been coming forward for the last couple of years and we were trying really hard to try to figure out how we can get the streets and parks maintenance positions into this year's budget. We look at them last year and we said, okay, we'll monitor twenty twenty five returns because we had the police station and Julio Park coming on board. And ultimately, we didn't have the revenue to do there, so it's some hard conversations, but I really want to appreciate Scott Agar and his team and Scott Devlin and and our supervisors in streets and parks for working with us and trying to figure out how we can do the work best we can with the resources we have. And then, of course, we need it as our fleet grows, equipment mechanic. And then another thing is technology support. As we get more technology systems, having people to help with those systems onboard them and maintaining them. And again, I S department also needs support to provide those internal services to the rest of the organization so that they can do the work and create those efficiencies. So those are the things I want to highlight that we weren't able to include in the budget, but there are some needs for those type of positions to be considered going forward. And, you know, that technology support position could be something that can come out of the revenue conversations over technology fees and figure out a way to create a funding stream to be able to provide that service because it's not only supporting internal operations and it technically, it supports the efficiency of permitting and tracking for the public to be able to access our systems. Whoops, did I go too fast? Oh, the other item on that last slide was, you know, again, we're looking at operation and maintenance enhancement that are very limited to keep the use of reserves and management level because we only have so much reserve, so we got to be more judicious in how we utilize those and not burn through them too quick on repairs and facilities. Again, the the twenty twenty six proposed budget is balanced in accordance with fiscal policies adopted by the city of city council in twenty thirteen. The capital projects, maintenance and initiatives funded are either from dedicated reserves or grant sources or dedicated funding. And then the twenty twenty six budget does does have that three million dollar operating deficit, but per fiscal policy, we are proposing to utilize three million dollars out of the budget policy reserve to balance that budget for council's consideration. So the work ahead, and again, going back to the beginning of the presentation, talking about these three prong approach, again, start, began introducing this to council a year ago and then started that work in depth in January and then finished out through several work sessions this year in terms of the three prong approach of revenue enhancements. Again, developed that and implemented strategic economic development, excuse me, revenue opportunities, those are in progress. Developing and implementing that strategic economic development investment plan, again, that's in progress. That's good, that strategy, draft strategy is going to come before council here in December to try to look at and say, okay, how do we want to, is this the direction we want to go and what do we want to prioritize for implementation with those, utilize those strategic investment reserve funds? reserve funds? And then, of course, continue to review opportunities to expand or enhance our revenue sources. Continue sound budget administration, that's been ongoing. And then, of course, in 2026, begin that process of reviewing priorities, essential services, and expenditures. So in terms of the budget, the next steps, as I mentioned, this is the official handoff or presentation to the council for the budget for your formal consideration. There have been several conversations over the past several months related to the budget and the budget development, but now we start the formal process. So in that formal process, there's built-in additional workshops with the council. And then, of course, various required hearings for the various components of the budget, like the revenue and such. So beginning Monday, November 3rd, we'll have a conversation on revenue sources. First budget hearing is scheduled for November 18th. Second budget hearing is scheduled for December 2nd. And I really urge anybody out there in the public to come and participate and provide feedback into the budget and provide comments. It's always as nice to be able to see what the community is thinking in relation to this matter. And then, of course, looking at council action on the budget by the second council meeting in December, December 16th for formal action. So with that, I'd be happy to respond to any other questions that, oh, excuse me. And also, for everybody online, the budget document is available on our website and through that QR code that just disappeared. And so now, with that, me and the director team will entertain any questions.
Any questions, council? Go ahead.
I guess one easy question, will the slides also be posted? Because I think this is a good summary, and it might help people who may not read the 250-page budget document, but the slides are helpful in like pointing out the key points.
Yes, we can make those available for sure.
I think that's a good idea. I was also going to point out that, you know, on Slide 80 where it shows the little people, the proportions of city staff to residents, right, where in 2016, we had 5.13 people per thousand, and then we've added 99 FTEs, but we're still only at 5.71 per thousand. So we haven't even increased our representation for city staff, a whole person, even though we've added 99 positions because the city has grown so much. But I think the one thing that I would point out that that slide doesn't reflect is even though we've kind of kept pace with our staffing proportionate to the growth of the population, the work that we do has become more and more complex over the last 10 years, right? So we've got different public records laws, different law enforcement requirements, we've got different standards for energy efficiency and permitting, and so that's kind of hidden in there, that our staffing has stayed pretty stable based on the population of the city, but it doesn't reflect that change in our business that asks more of us.
Yeah, and I thank you for bringing that up because I did also forgot to add, but it reminded me is, the staffing, especially from 2020, we had additional programs that we historically hadn't done that's built into that staffing. So we may not have been adding staffing to respond to growing community service demands, but we added new programs and priorities, for example, homeless response, human services, you can go down some of the list, and they're all important part of the community programs, but that is built into that number you saw too.
Go ahead.
You know, I get that we, you know, we are pulling $3 million out of reserves, but we still don't have much of a clear path of how we make that up, and we haven't really talked about any cuts for the next, you know, four or five years, which we're going to have an ever-increasing deficit, and we still really haven't had a discussion about how we make that up. And I actually really like this FTE per, you know, thousand population thing because I think that gives us a good reference point of, you know, how many employees do we have per thousand? It gives us something to go off of and to kind of figure, yet the city's always going to change, our needs are going to change, the rules are going to change, but we have to have some mechanism in place to get rid of positions we don't need anymore and move people into positions that we are the future. We're going to, we're going to deal with that forever. That's just life. But we have yet to really have that serious conversation of how we make up that budget four years from now, and I'm growing ever more worried about that because nobody wants to talk about potential cuts, but there's no way out of a $14 million deficit without some sort of cut somewhere. So I would really appreciate if we had that conversation moving forward because there's no way out of it, and it's going to come really fast.
Thank you, and that's actually programmed into that 2026, starting January 2026 of looking at those priorities, service deliveries, essential services, and start looking at where we find expenditure savings or reductions. Again, you never want to go down that path, you hope not, but we have to be prepared. There may be some revenue things that change, but in the next year, I don't know if that will happen, but we will have those conversations and work with council and the organization. And again, one thing I want to iterate too is, we're not unique as we see in the newspapers or the media or, you know, other local governments, counties and cities all around us across the state are going through these challenges. And it's difficult because of that mechanism of how the inflationary costs have risen for services and the revenue costs is misaligned. And so we're looking for ways to be able to buffer that. And I think you're right, we're going to have to start reimagining two or three years out, what does local government service look like in the future versus what it is 10 years ago?
I would say some of that work's already begun. We've identified efficiencies in hundreds of thousands of dollars, millions, you know, so that's one step, but always encourage our residents to shop at home because we found out during COVID, as bad as it was with nobody traveling, that their spending their dollar here makes a difference. We were phased, we had budget outlook, you know, shortfalls from that, and as it turned out, it wasn't quite as bad as we thought it'd be because everybody spent their money here in town. That's how important it is. So, you know, shop where you want your money to stay.
Well, shop local and think local, and that includes local government because that's where the services hit the street, and most people are directly affected.
And you want notes?
You know, these past couple of years have really loaded up heavily and spent a lot of dollars on infrastructure, you know, between the Cuyahoga Park and some of the other projects, police station and so on. We will get onto the other side of those when, where we only have M and O. But one thing that we, I think, probably need to focus on is bringing new businesses into the city, new revenue sources, and looking at, you know, what can't you buy in Lacey? What can't you do in Lacey? And trying to figure out a way to plug some of those holes so that money doesn't leave the community to get what it's needing or looking for. And so I'm really hoping that we could, you know, make that an agenda item for our retreat so that we can really just kind of take a deeper dive into, you know, yes, we have, you know, a budget deficit currently and even larger, we're on the way, and I'm glad that we're first looking at cutting expenses and finding a way to kind of trim the fat there. But on the other side of that is the revenue picture, and yeah, we've identified some areas where we can make some increases, you know, with the cable TV and some of the other things that we're not charging for that every other community charges for. But at the same time, I really want to take a look at, you know, what we're missing in the community that we can add and that will, you know, be attractive to the residents and also play a good role in the bottom line of the budget.
I just want to put another plug in. Our crack team in economic development, Vanessa, Sarah, and Wesley are developing that five-year economic development strategy they're going to bring to council in December to set the stage for the conversation in January at the retreat to talk about, okay, where do we focus on that economic development strategies from recruitment to promotion, all those different things that kind of tie to back to how we create or promote or recruit investment into the community.
Thank you. Councilmember Greenstein, do you have anything?
You know, the only thing I would add is, it's important to keep in mind, I think, that although we have a budget deficit, some of that comes from just the way that the city does the budget in the sense of the conservative approach that's taken to our budget process. You know, for instance, last year, we had, I think it was 1.8 billion, I think was the number that refused, that we had to take from reserves, but we're going to wind up as this year comes to an end, probably adding close to that same amount back into our reserves. So we're really, and although I understand that we have to budget for this deficit, it may not and likely will not be as bad as it looks. It probably will not be the full $3 million that we come up short.
Well, and I've been doing these budgets long enough for here during, you know, back in, you know, 16 years ago, and our budget looked considerably different than it does now on the revenue side compared to the expenditure side. And for years, I've seen what the projected deficit could be six years out from now. First of all, we'll never let the budget get that out of whack, right? We will make those adjustments prior to we see a $9 million deficit the following year. We just, that's not how we do business here. And then there's always other factors that come in. So, you know, Councilmember Greenstein, you know, myself, we've been doing this, we've been around long enough to know that I actually feel pretty good about where we're at in the city of Lacey compared to what we have seen in our surrounding jurisdictions. I mean, yeah, we're only, you know, adding three employees that are, you know, with our interfund, you know, are being paid from our interfund, interfunds, but we're seeing other jurisdictions who are cutting drastic employees, you know, and we're not in that position. Yes, we have some work to do, and it's going to take a combination of all of the above, right? We're going to look at where it makes sense for revenue enhancements. We've already looked at, you know, scrubbing the budget. And then the long-term economic development strategy is what's going to keep us going. You know, when I first saw in council, it was property tax was right there with sales tax. Now, sales tax is twice what property tax is, even though our assessed value has grown three times the amount. So, you know, I'm confident that we are in a good place relative to what a lot of other jurisdictions are dealing with right now because we have budgeted conservatively, and we have made sure that economic development is something that we take pride in and foster in our community and, you know, and try to develop as much as possible because without great businesses and, you know, people to buy houses and all that, everything that you need, you cannot cover the services that's needed. So I'm confident, we've done it during my, you know, years here, and we'll continue to do it going forward. So I really appreciate all the staff's work, and I know it's tough, right? I mean, the six positions that are requested are desperately needed. It's not like we're, those positions aren't needed, but we're not going to make a decision that is going to jeopardize, you know, council, future councils, we're going to have to make major, major cuts because we're making a crazy decision on a want, where maybe even it's a need, but if we can't afford it, we're not going to do it. And so it's not as dire. It's not as dire as it may look. I've seen the dire outlooks for long enough that I know it's not going to be as dire as you think it is.
Can I just, and I totally agree, and I know we'll get faster, but if we present something to the public that says we're going to be in this situation potentially, we should be able to have the stuff to back it up versus just, I've been here a long time, we're good. Like, the public needs to know, like, we have a plan.
That, and that is always the other side of that. That's why I've always kind of cautioned a little bit about like showing the worst-case scenario. Yeah, it's the worst-case scenario. If we do nothing, this is how ugly it could get, but we're not going to do nothing. That's not what we do here in Lacey. So, you know, we will find, it's not going to be easy. It's never, it's never really been easy, but we have had this historic growth that we've had in our community has been, is amazing on so many sides, right? You know, our community's grown, we have so many new people coming in, you know, with new businesses and everything else. But we are going to, we're reaching that point that we're going to have to think a little more strategically about how we're going to continue to provide the services that are, you know, the exceptional services that we have here in Lacey. But I'm confident this council is going to figure, find a way forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Vasquez.
I had one other question. Back on Slide 34, you talked about a little over $400,000 set aside for the annexation study. That's a lot of money for a study, and I know that we already did a study that gave us some general numbers about costs and population and what it would take. I'm guessing this study would give us maybe more granular information about potential revenue versus costs if we were to annex neighborhoods and commercial areas. Is now the right time to set aside almost a half a million dollars for the annexation study? And are we anticipating that the county might partner with us on this? Is this like shared funding for the report?
I think this is a, this is a item, a number we got put in there for, again, for the worst-case scenario. Our plan is to work and reach out with the county and do this work jointly because they would have to do the exact same thing, right? And it doesn't make sense, it makes more sense for us to work off the same set of numbers as we're going forward in the proposed annexation under the, what we've talked about up to now with being able to take advantage of the sales tax, state shared sales tax revenue for that. That's going to take a lot of work. I've also, you know, talked to our city manager, and I've talked to several county commissioners. We need to get on that right away because there is a deadline that we're going to have to, no-go or go. And so there's a lot of outreach that will need to be done no matter what if we do go. And we also have to agree with how we're going to get there, so.
That's the thing I'm a little nervous about, just because I know the county is really struggling right now. They have a significant budget deficit, they've had a lot of turnover. Are they going to be ready to partner with us on this?
So what I propose is that we start, we have a subcommittee of our council and a subcommittee of their county commission, and we start meeting on a regular basis to keep, move this forward. Otherwise, we will never get there, and we'll miss out on this one, this opportunity, take advantage of some revenues to backfill and make this possible.
If I can add to that, and thank you for that question, Councilmember Vasquez, because I may have mislabeled that funding, the $403,000, it says annexation study. It's actually implementation direction. So the study itself.
It says annexation strategy, so.
Okay, good. I know I flipped it around. So the study is going to be a small piece of that $403,000. So there's multiple expenses. If this proceeds, so first off, as Mayor is correct, as we're starting to approach accounting, to kind of, okay, what's the next step? How do we start forming this together? We do want to figure out a way to jointly fund the study so we don't have two different studies out there that we can work on common numbers. And then, once we get the study done, then you have to start looking, okay, just go forward. If so, then we got to do a communication and outreach. So a lot of that dollars that are set aside is for that effort to do communication because if we're looking at exercise the full ability of what the state provides at 10,000 in population to get to two tenths of 1%, there's a lot of people you're going to need to engage with, and they're going to be in different parts of the city, so there are going to be different needs. So they're going to have to have a robust communication strategy. And then if it goes to an interlocal agreement and that gets adopted and the annexation is completed, we also have to do within the annexation, a door-to-door census, and that, with that many people, is upward north of $200,000 itself. So those are things that we're going to have to plan and set aside.
Are we expecting to have to do the census in 2026?
No, but this is set in the forms there, and then, of course, as we move forward, then we'll look at where we have other reserve funds to be able to provide, but right now it's a starting point as a placeholder. But I just want to kind of, there's more than just the study. The study is probably a small percentage of that total.
That's helpful.
One other thing I wanted to bring in perspective is, because we have a council majority of business owners on this council, okay, like planning commissioners, right? And before COVID, we had 2,000-plus businesses in the city of Lacey. We have 1,500 now. If we had those 500 businesses, that would be 500 more businesses for sales tax, which is our biggest, right, revenue gainer. What I'm saying here is, you know, to say again, if we shop here in our city, we benefit our businesses here. If we don't, they leave. It's 500 businesses that should be here and really should grow by at least 3% or 5%, right? So, you know, that's the impact it has when you shop somewhere else, so.
Is that 500 businesses, is that just an error? I can't believe we've lost 500 businesses since COVID.
Remember COVID, right? In 2019, it was 2,300-ish businesses? That's what I Googled anyways.
Oh, you Googled.
Well, yeah, I'm not sure if that is next.
Well, yeah, I'm not sure if that is next to.
I do know, I do know the numbers from 2024, or excuse me, yeah, 2024, was around 1,400, 200, so 1,420-ish, if I remember correctly. And we've been increasing business over year over year and we've been actually improving that business climate and growing some business. But that's business license for all types of this, homegrown business all the way up to your brick and mortar retail, so.
Yeah, I don't think Google is, is as accurate as ours.
Pre-pandemic numbers, right? Because we, we lost some businesses in that, but that, we, we still don't have as many as we used to.
Okay. Is there anyone else?
All right, just one last thing I want to thank again. You know, Troy and Chelsea and Gabby and Donna and Peyton and everybody else that helped put the patterns together. And then also looking over to that leadership team we have over there. It's, it's, again, I appreciate the council's conversation about the work to be done because, again, it's a teamwork between council and the leadership and the organization as well to try to figure out how to work through these processes and have these conversations. So I really want to thank all the directors for their work in preparing this year's budget because it was, you know, a challenge and, and they sharpened their pencils. And then also all their support and pulling all the information together for tonight's presentation. So thank you all. And thank you, council, for the opportunity.
Good job. Thank you. So now we're on to council reports. I'm up first, but I do not have a report, so, Deputy Mayor?
Okay, I have a couple of quick ones. Let's see. LTAC. LTAC met last Thursday. We did do our recommendations for funding. The recommendations were heavily based on, you know, council's direction, which was to, you know, fund more Lacey projects and to, you know, try to supply more dollars to the rack. And so as we, you know, went through each of the applicants one at a time, that constant reminder was there. We did kind of have to say no to quite a few applications this year. We, we looked at some, some information that, that kind of put us in a spot where, like, you know, this might serve better under some different dollars. Some of the asks were, they were, they were good community events, but they might be better served with a different pot of money. So, so what, one of the things that we did do in that instance was if, if we felt like it was going to be better served by a different fund, then we, and we ended up saying no to it, we diverted those funds to the Regional Athletic Complex so that we could kind of bolster that up. Again, following council's directions. Some of the other jurisdictions, you know, are really heavy on whatever it is that their main attraction is. You know, for example, Bellevue has the Maiden Bower Center. Tacoma has the, the Convention Center. And so when looking at the heads and beds numbers, the number one heads and beds was the Visitor Convention Bureau with 10,182. And then the rack was second with 10,000, pretty much 10,000 flat. And so after all of our recommendations, and we, we, we really went on a heads and beds first, kind of, you know, that, that was really the, the lead thing that we, that we tried to do. In the past, we had taken some chances on some smaller events and, and thought, you know, we saw some opportunity in these smaller events and thought, you know, let's give them an opportunity, let's, let's grow these smaller events and watch them put more heads and beds year over year, which was, you know, really fun to do because a lot of people got an opportunity that, that maybe wouldn't have gotten an opportunity. But this year with, with council's new direction and, and city manager, you know, really kind of emphasizing the budget, we did kind of try to alleviate some of the pressure on the general fund for the rack and, and kind of give, give some of that LTAC money over there. So in the end, we did fund quite a few. We, lots of heads and beds won. We did scale back on a couple of recommendations that we had funded higher in the past. And in the end, we took the leftover dollars, which I believe was like 15,000, and we put that in the rack too. So, so the rack numbers are up and VCB got funded, the rack got funded, several, several, you know, we, I think we got somewhere in the neighborhood of 30, 29, 30 applications, somewhere in that ballpark. And we couldn't fund them all, but, you know, looking at our peer jurisdictions, we found that for a city our size, we get a lot of applicants in comparison to other cities our size. I think of the cities that have the amount of residents that we have, we receive more applications than any of them. And so, and that just goes to show that, you know, our, our community likes to come together, put on events and have a vibrant place to live, work and play. But those recommendations will be coming to you guys, I believe on the November 3rd council meeting, those recommendations will come out and we'll review them all together and, and, and see how that goes. So that was LTAC. Jazzcom met on the 16th and we, we kind of had a budget overview. In that budget overview, our, the Jazzcom five-year strategic plan is going to be due at the end of 2026. The previous strategic plan went from 22 to 26 for the five years. And in that plan, some of the benchmarks were to perform 10% of spay and neuter surgeries onsite and increase, you know, by five, five to 10% year over year. The result was we, Jazzcom was able to reach 98% in-house spay and neuter surgeries in that period of time. So kind of blew the benchmark out of the water. Another one was to provide 15% to 20% of medical treatments and procedures onsite by 2025. Currently, over 90% of the medical treatments performed are in-house at this point in time for Jazzcom. So, you know, the executive director, Sarah, has really, really, really done a great job. And she's put together, you know, a, a really good team that is really hitting a lot of the, the marks and benchmarks that were placed from the previous strategic plan. One of the other things that happened was the Animal Cruelty Response Team, which is the first of its kind in the nation. And so that was a, a team that was put together by the executive director, which, you know, responds to obviously animal cruelty and it's, it's a volunteer team. And they go out with field workers and respond to these different things. As of September 30th, animal intake has surpassed all of 2024. And so there's still a quarter left. So Jazzcom is growing and is really serving the community well. Field response calls are up for all the jurisdictions. Olympia is up 11%, Lacey 22%, Tumwater 7.5%, Thurston County 23%. So the call volume is immense. Fortunately, Jazzcom is fully staffed. But with, with all those raised percentages, it puts, you know, the county call volume at 1,100 or 1,240, Tumwater at 246, Lacey at 632, Olympia at 662. That is a lot of phone calls every day for, for animal services. License sales are up four and a half percent or 4.3%. Private contributions for Jazzcom this year are at 1.952 million. There was, that's a significant amount of contributions that Jazzcom received or was actively recruited by, by the executive director. So, so a lot of those, those contributions, they go to offset the jurisdictional assessments, which accounts for 53% of the budget. And so sometimes those reserves are used for, for offsetting, but oftentimes there are some supplementary reserves, revenue that, that, that are used, which are shared revenues, contractual revenues, donations, adoptions, reclamation, licensing. All those dollars that come in offset the assessment that we would normally get. So just to give an example, Lacey pays about $480,000 a year, but without these offsetting dollars, we'd be closer to $800,000 a year in assessment. The county would be closer to $2 million and so on down the line because it's per capita. Total budget for this year is 3.941 million. Of that number, 2.084 are jurisdictional assessments. The rest of it is taken care of by contracts, donations, licensing, and all the different functions that Jazzcom does takes care of almost half of the budget. So Jazzcom is, is, is in pretty good position. We didn't really get to talk too much this year about the legislation that, that we're hoping to share with Representative Partially, which is to have a animal taxing district to kind of a, I won't say alleviate the pressure, but to cover a lot of the, the concerns, especially capital. And so as you guys know, the facility over there is really old and very limited. And with a taxing district, the possibility of getting a new facility is much better. You know, depending on, you know, how much that, that taxing district would, would present as a, as a, as a levy, it, it would most likely have to sunset within 10 years because it would be probably more money than necessary. The new facility may cost somewhere in the neighborhood of 25, 25 million. So plans are still being put together on that. There was an adoption event which resulted in 66 adoptions. This was a fee waived event. Most times adoptions have a cost that go along with them that the dollars are kept to offset our, our assessments. The Positive Outcomes Coordinator, Bella, she was featured on the Animal Welfare Panel at a conference, conference in Yakima. And Joint Animal Services achieved Care Ready Bronze Certification, which is when 65% of your staff does, does the certification. In, in Jazzcom's case, it was 100% of the staff that wanted to, to, to do the ready certification. So everybody is trained in that area. So all in all, Jazzcom is, is doing pretty decent. And that is my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Greenstein.
I have no report this evening.
Councilmember Stedman.
No report, but a, a quick thing of personal preference, if I may. So I attended Quilts for Honor today and they recognized five Vietnam-era veterans. And it was really awesome to, to see and, and the appreciation that that generation didn't really get, you know, at, at that day and time. And, you know, contrast with my generation where we were thanked every single day and, you know, and that was even prior to the, the first Gulf War. So it's, it's totally awesome. If people haven't been to one, you should definitely go and see one. If you know a veteran, especially one that's, might have some challenges or maybe not feeling as appreciated as they, as they might or should, you know, nominate them for Quilt of Honor. It's a, I, I think it's very, very positive. So if you know somebody that hasn't been through that ceremony and, and been recognized, it's a, it's well worth nominating them for, so that's, I want to share that.
Thank you. Councilmember Cox.
Two reports. The first is Inter-City Transit Authority, which met on October 15th. We are, we have scheduled for November 7th interviews with 18 shortlist applicants for the Citizens Advisory Committee and then five standby candidates and three youth applicants as well. So it's going to be a long day for the interview team. We also scheduled a public hearing for the 2026 draft budget. That will be at 5:30 PM on Wednesday, November 5th. Final adoption is proposed to be on December 3rd. I just thought this was just an interesting note, but there was some routine surplus property declarations, but the one that kind of jumped out at me was that we're donating a surplus bus shelter valued at $500 to the city of BuCota. And I just, I thought that was a really nice thing for them to do. We had a presentation from our federal advocate, Dale Lern, of the Gordon Thomas Honeywell Governmental Affairs Firm. And he gave us an update on activities that affect public transportation that are going on in the nation's capital. They're not so worried about 2026 as they are out beyond that. So more challenges probably down the line there. And then we had a lovely presentation from Matthew Bronson from the Washington State Transit Insurance Pool. He's the executive director of that body. And he presented us with the 2024 Safety Star Award, which points out that Inter-City Transit, based on a five-year record, is safest in its class. And that, that was really good news to hear. And then moving on to the LOT, which is Lacey, Olympia, Tumwater, Thurston County Clean Water Alliance. This board met on October 8th. And we, we have been going through board policies on finance and on other things. And this was just another briefing about proposed largely housekeeping updates to that. We received a briefing on the draft legislative priorities for the upcoming session. And we're focusing in on preserving funding for low-interest infrastructure loans for sustaining momentum for the restoration of the Deschutes Estuary. A complete comprehensive Puget Sound nutrient management, supporting the Class A-plus reclaimed water demonstration. This is treating reclaimed water to potable drinking water standards as, as a demonstration project. And then finally shifting the treatment burden to polluters. And this is important because there are more and more regulations coming down the pike that we have to test for. The biggest one, I think, is this group of chemicals, they're called forever chemicals, known as PFAS. And while LOT isn't currently required, it's coming, like in the next couple of years that they'll be required to do that. And that's very expensive testing and treatment. We also heard information on a project to update the concrete coatings at the Capitol Lake Pump Station. We had an overview of the Bud Inlet Treatment Plant Process. And we received information about LOT's recent award of the Utility of the Future Today designation from the Water Environment Federation. This is another prestigious national award that LOT has won. And this one is based on several criteria. One is continually, continuing to improve operations, continually exceeding regulatory requirements, to plan and invest effectively in infrastructure and in engaging communities and staff in productive and meaningful ways. And LOT obviously has done a good job in, in all those categories to, to receive this award. That is my report.
Thank you. Let's see, Councilmember Vasquez.
It's me. I reported previously on our last Thurston Regional Planning Council meeting. The update mainly is that the subcommittee that is searching for our next executive director for TRPC met and did interviews with the semifinalists. We had five interviews scheduled for November, no, it's not November yet, October 17th. And that went really well. And we will be inviting the finalists to come and do final interviews as a part of our meeting on November 7th. So there will also be a community forum on November 6th, so stay tuned for more details. But the plan is that TRPC's council will make the decision on who the final successful candidate for the executive director position will be on November 7th. That's my report. Oh, wait, did you have something?
I was just going to say that meeting agreed, I think, is at 5:30 on November 6. I was just going to say that meet and greet, I think, is at 5:30 on November 6th at the Port Facility. Just detail.
Okay. And then Councilmember Dunning.
The LEAF-1 met on October 9th to approve claims and then extended poll to another term and just revised a little bit of minor language in policy. And then ORCA met October 8th. Main topic of discussion there was the penalty matrix for outdoor burn violation. So that's something that's ongoing, and they're trying to figure out how to best manage that. So it mainly applies to some of the other counties, but they're trying to get a little bit of standardization there. And then the VCB met today with a lot of representatives from the Tumwater, Olympia, and the county to talk about really how we move forward as an organization and get more communication. They elected, or they, we elected Wayne Fournier, Commissioner, to the board, so he's going to be representing the county. So they'll have a county representative now. And then we discussed the interim process for CEO and kind of settled on six to nine months. And then one of the recommendations there was to add one of the electives to the hiring committee for that, and I was chosen to do that. So I'll be on the interim hiring. We didn't, we didn't, or we don't have that for the CEO final position. They're still kind of going back and forth on some of the NDA agreements. And if electives can, you know, be participating in that, and that's probably a discussion we'll have further down. And then we started talking about some of the FIFA updates, which I have to admit were very confusing, because things have changed rather rapidly. And I think the city manager sat in on a meeting with that, and we didn't get to talk about it as much as we'd like, because our meeting really ran long. But I think you might have some updates on that, potentially?
Yes, it was a topic of the conversation at last Friday's Three Cities Meeting. And Deputy Mayor Miller and I were there at the meeting. And really, it's about, well, one is, for the Lacey, the request was for the jurisdictions to provide some dollars, roughly, I think it was $250,000 to design a event. And that Thurston Chamber would take the lead in that planning. And the split was roughly $80,000 per partner and Tumwater 50. And then, of course, all the jurisdictions are there for 80, and then Tumwater, right now, is looking at a little lesser contribution. So then the conversation was about, well, what is needed to host a facility and plan for it? And, you know, because is it going to be a four-day event, or a two-day event, or a one-day event? And there's different, you know, those costs range from $450,000 for one day up to over a million for a multiple-day event. The, so then it's just like, well, how do you do the cash flow? And then when's, how do you get private sponsors to make up the difference? And what's the timeframe? So there's some conversations about how to move forward with the funding that's already been pledged and develop additional funding, and when that time is to make the decision it's a go or not a go. I think at the Three Cities Meeting, the Chamber suggested having a subgroup kind of work on that and develop that. And I don't know if that's going to be formed or is being formed, but that was the direction I heard. I don't know, Deputy Murphy, have anything else to add?
Yeah. So because a lot of these dollars have to be front-loaded, we were kind of hesitant to really make a commitment. It looks like the go or no-go dollar amount is probably around $700,000. And we're falling pretty short of that, even though the Port, even though we couldn't really, we can't really front-load a lot of the dollars, because most of us are LTAC dollars, with the exception of the city of Olympia. They actually have a fund where they can tap, which is not LTAC, and it doesn't have to be reimbursement money. So we just haven't hit the threshold to say for sure that we're a go, even though the Port made a very generous offer to do some front-loading of some dollars, so long as those dollars could be funneled back to them through the process. We just haven't really hit the number that we need to be at. But if we do make a strong commitment, apparently, the Seattle Fan Zone has some sponsors who might be interested in helping us with some funding in this area, but they need to see a commitment first. So we're kind of in, you know, a little bit in limbo because of the shortage of funds that we have here to put on this kind of an event. So more to come.
And now, now I really mess with everyone's brain, because there's some further discussion between different VCBs. And it seems like in just the past few weeks, there has been quite a few changes to the rules. And the county didn't know about this, and the cities didn't know about this, of what is going to be allowed. So supposedly, now, you don't have to host all six. You can even just host one event. You, one, I think it's Everett that is doing grants to local businesses to host the event. So there was a lot of new information that seemed like it just dropped out of nowhere. And I think it's because a lot of municipalities were dropping out of participating because of these rules or restrictions. So I am guessing in the next month or two, there might be some pretty dramatic changes to what it actually looks like that could be, you know, you know, we could just host one big event for the USA game on June 19th, which, you know, we could plan for, you know, a lot better. But, yeah, it seems like it is ever rapidly changing. So stay tuned for what that looks like. And that's my report.
Okay. Did I miss, Councilmember Greenstein? Okay, okay, sorry. Well, with that, we have reached the end of our reports. I hope everyone's recovering from yesterday's Mariners' loss. I still haven't recovered, but hopefully I will at some point. But it was just quite, quite a run for our Seattle Mariners, and we were a outs away from the World Series. But that's always next year. With that, I'm in, without objection, I'm going to call this meeting adjourned at 8:37 PM. And as always, you keep it classy, Lacey.